It's an only mode.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me make sure my mic is on. So for tonight's meeting, we do have our regular council meeting, which will start at six o'clock. But we are, we have four proclamations that we're gonna just read in real quick and and get those done before our meeting tonight. Typically, no action is taken on these. We just want to make sure we have the proclamations done. And they're on the record. So we're just gonna do that prior to our regular city council meeting. So I won't even have to call the meeting to order at this point. So I'll start with proclamation declaring September twentieth through the twenty-six twenty twenty. A small business week. Ms. Bailey, I saw her earlier. Did you have anything to say on this one or just? Nope. Okay. And counsel, do we want to read these in or are we just good? Hey, we we support small business week?
It's up to you.
Okay, the second option is good with me as well. And the second proclamation is declaring September twenty-sixth through October fourth. Twenty twenty is Creek Week. There are three of us now who have have been or are on this Fountain Creek watershed district. And in Greg and myself and then Ms. Estes is slowly inserting herself into that conversation and and becoming acquainted with all that. So we're really excited about. Haven't heard join that team on that. But every year now for what, three, four, five years, we've been doing Creek Week and it's just an opportunity for the region along the watershed to kind of clean up the area. So if you have a group you work with regularly or a student council, for example, that would love to, you know, go and, you know, help keep and beautify our our waterway. That would be great. And they they get you all the materials you need and 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 you can go out and and spend some time cleaning up around the watershed. And I think our resident yoga master has has got a day scheduled coming up as well in October. So just a great opportunity for any of those groups to be able to be a part of that. Our third proclamation is declaring October fourth as National Arts Month. And typically, we have the art director from Colorado Springs who comes in and gives us his spiel and they last year kind of combined Creek Week with with the Art Month and they were doing these large letters that they formed out of kind of fencing material. And they filled them up with the trash I was collected during Creek Week and then they had them sitting around town. So it was kind of a neat idea to to kind of expose both the art, the art week and and the Creek Week. So and they've always been gracious enough to come down. I know in the middle of all this COVID stuff has just been difficult to try. Do all these meetings. This is our second one that we've tried in person as well. So. And then, of course, a proclamation declaring October fifth twenty twenty is World Habitat Day. Very important for the City of Fountain is Habitat Humanity have have built a great neighborhood just to the north of City Hall here. And then they've started building within the city. I know there's a couple houses right next to City Hall that they've they've built and have been a big piece of our city and and providing that affordable housing option for for families who want to live down here. And and as we all know, they're a great organization to to partner with. So with that, if there's anything that anybody else would like to comment on these proclamations? Nope. So we will go ahead and declare those. I don't think we need to take a motion or anything on those, right? Okay. And so for everybody that needs the proclamation back, we'll get those signed and and you can come in and grab those. So with that, we will be meeting again in about nineteen minutes for our regular city council meeting. Thank you for joining for now. Okay, good evening. It is six o'clock. Welcome to our city council meeting for September twenty-second twenty twenty. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Okay, thank you. And so our usual program that does our meetings for us to go to webinar is having some issues. So you won't see me on camera tonight. That's probably a good thing. And so we're still going to do everything and you can and listen in. For some reason, again, the webcam isn't showing up on anybody's computer who's on. So we just will go without the webcam tonight. But hopefully, you all can still hear and we will move that way. As usual, I will try to ensure that everyone gets a chance. If you see your little hand, go up. And so Paul, go ahead and go through the the spiel if you're ready.
Certainly. Good evening. Thank you for attending the council meeting tonight virtually. If you're not familiar with the GoToWebinar interface, you'll see that there is a control panel with four buttons. If all you see are the four buttons, click the orange arrow to open the interface to expose the rest of the control panel. All attendees' microphones are muted. And there are two ways you can communicate with city council. One would be to raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other would be to type a question into the question pane on the attendee interface. If you're not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. Member of staff will call on you by your name that you that you registered with and you'll they will unmute you for your question. To ask a question in the questions pane and the attendee pane, type your question to the city council or staff members and the staff member will read the question out loud to the appropriate party. If the question pane is not visible, click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Paul, for doing that. And so those of you who are online and and in in our meeting virtually, we will I've got someone helping me to make sure that I'm not missing any. And we will go ahead and make sure we can get everybody heard during public to be heard. As I'm looking through our agenda here, and again, please bear with us because, again, this is our second meeting. We're trying to do both virtually and in person. So tonight, we do have all council members here and and some in our public that are here with us in person. And then I do see it looks like about nine attendees that are attending virtually. So we will try to make sure to make sure everyone's heard tonight. So with that, so we'll move on to item number four, presentations. Our first one is the EPA Browns Brown Fields Coalition Partners Public Forum Kickoff Presentation. Ms. Bailey.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for a few minutes for us to present in tandem with Colorado Springs. I have Erin Egbert with me on our coalition partner effort of the EPA Brownfields Award that was granted to us in two thousand and nineteen, but becoming effective project flow for twenty twenty. So we're here just to give you a brief update. And if you had any questions or comments, we would welcome those at this time. At this time, I'll turn it over to Erin to start off the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Erin Egbert, City of Colorado Springs. I'm in the Public Works Department, a project manager for the EPA Brownfields Grant. To kind of give you a little history of how we kind of started this was we had a lot of city infrastructure, old city infrastructure on the east side of downtown called the Shooks Run Corridor. So it's about a four mile stretch from Patty Jewett Golf Course all the way down to the confluence with Fountain Creek. So we created a transformational plan and whole approach for that corridor to redevelop it, turn it into a linear greenway. But we really had no idea how to start the funding process. So we had we had hired a consultant, Stan Tech. And Stan Tech helped us with the process of identifying potential funding opportunities. And this EPA Brownfield Grant really bubbled up to the top as something that we had never applied for before. We hadn't really done it. The City of Colorado Springs really doesn't have a Brownfield Group. I did go to the conference in California last December before everything really got shut down. But the but it was amazing, some of the cities and jurisdictions, how they handle brownfields and how they just keep applying for these grants and build this program. The program's typically in their planning department, not their engineering department, because it tends to have much more of an economic development type focus. But we did, we did decide to apply for the grant. We did put together a coalition. So the coalition consists of City of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Utilities, School District eleven, and then Fountain. With the whole goal of the utilities portion, the District eleven portion and Colorado Springs portion would focus on the Shooks Run Corridor. But then we opened up the opportunity that Kimberly will talk about for the Fountain residents and some of your challenges with contamination. Why don't we go to the next slide? So so what is a brownfield? That's very, very confusing. But essentially, in a nutshell, a brownfield is any site that can't be used for its most valuable purpose. So the whole goal of this program is to help developers, help cities clean up distressed, contaminated parcels and bring them up for their highest and best use. With the next slide. So what this grant can and cannot do. So basically, this is an assessment only grant. So we can assess the site. We can do phase one analysis, phase two analysis. We can get it plans and specs. We can get everything shovel ready for a cleanup of a specific site. So and then there's other grants you can apply for to actually clean up the site. There's some revolving loan programs and those type of things that communities can use to clean up. And I am by no means an expert in EPA or contaminated groundwater ground issues and that kind of stuff. So I'm learning as we go and Kimberly's been kind of coming along too, asking a lot of questions. So she's doing a great job. And why don't we go to the next slide? I'll turn it over to Kimberly to kind of talk about how this affects City of Fountain.
Thanks, Erin. So this is step one of a multi-step process in regards if we find any contaminated sites within the entire focus area of the Brownfield Grant. And you need this first step to identify those sites. So then you can work into leveraging some of these additional funding pools that are available at both the state as well as this federal level in addition to this first wave of funding we've received. So as Erin had said, that the Springs really didn't have a focus group on brownfields, neither does Fountain, right? And so we've really been working quite diligently on the back end, trying to get our arms around what is the perceived areas of contamination or possible areas of underutilized assets to move them into a higher productive use for the community long term is really what we're working at. Next slide. So as he mentioned, the COS is on the right side of the map. So that is the Shooks Run Corridor of their master plan that they're focusing on. And then equally on the Fountain side, we primarily have extracted the US eighty-five urban renewal area. Because urban renewal is considered kind of those perceived underutilized sites in that definition. And then we started looking at focus areas. So your three main focus areas are in your midpoint of where the Fountain Regional Park Trail is. And we have some sites there that are kind of abutting a natural scape with some abrasive uses in that corridor and how we may be able to optimize those parcels long term. And then as you move southern, closer to the exit one twenty-eight area, you come into Old Town as well as the Gateway Districts. And those are two key focus areas as well. I will stress, just because this is called a Fountain Creek Brownfield Grant, it does not contain the sites to only touch the creek. It can be any sites within the jurisdictional boundary itself that we are focusing on. Erin, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so our project timeline, these grants are typically a three-year grant. The EPA is very flexible. They do they do grant extensions if we need it. The COVID issues have slowed us down a bit. But I do think we're getting ready to have our first public meeting here at the end of October. And then we'll really hit the ground running. So there's a lot of detail on this schedule, but basically, it's a three-year grant. Go to the next slide. So what we've been working on diligently and very hard is the is the project management plan. We have worked on getting a quality assurance plan with the EPA. We've worked on our public outreach plan. And we're going to be housing a lot of this information on the City of Colorado Springs website. So we're creating a special spot there to where people can go in and put the nominee. So we're supporting that web access for it. And then we're really getting into the community engagement where where individual property owners can nominate sites for cleanup or sites that they think they might have concerns with along each of these corridors. And then we'll start really digging some holes and doing some work and trying to really figure out what kind of contaminants we might be hitting. Go to the next slide, please. This is a difficult to read flow chart, but it just kind of walks us through from the nomination form all the way to where we can actually create a cleanup plan for that individual site. And then hit the next chart, please. The next slide. There we go. So as I mentioned, we're going to start our community engagement this month or next month in October. And we're really focusing, we're trying to do, we're trying to use leverage technology as best we can, which I think a lot of communities are trying to do. So we will be having some virtual meetings and some of those type of things and some surveys and chats and and those type of things. But we were excited about it. We've got the the team is really fired up and and we're going to do some good things with this grant. And I should mention, too, the one of the main reasons we went in with the coalition was that allowed us to get up to a $600,000 grant, which we're excited about. With that, turn next slide. We've kind of talked mostly about this kind of stuff. But you, as you get to the sites, you will see consultants or engineers and testers on some of these locations. And we will have to have permission to be on a on a property too. And we're not going to be doing this where we're just entering a property to do some sampling and testing. So and with that, I think we'll open it up to questions for me or Kimberly.
All right. Any questions from anybody? Go ahead.
So you go in and you test a site, right?
So the first.
You don't know, you don't have any money for mitigation. This is just the testing portion of it, right?
Exactly. Assessment.
Test a private property owner's property. What responsibilities or hindrances can that put on to be put onto the property if they don't have the money or they don't want to mitigate it?
Well, that's kind of a, we're struggling a little bit. I'll be totally honest with Colorado Springs Utilities on this matter because they're like, well, once we, once we find something, don't we have to do something? So though, but there is no mandatory cleanup. This is only assessments and identifications. There would have to be some disclosure if the property owner did find some contaminants. If they were to sell, try to sell that property, they would need to disclose that. A lot of big box retailers or nationwide companies are not as scared of cleanup and contamination as some smaller developers are. Just because you find contaminants doesn't mean you need, doesn't mean you need to remove it. You can cap it. You can mitigate it. You can vent it. You can do a whole, whole bunch of things to mitigate that concern or that issue.
I'm just thinking about, you know, a small property owner. They decide to let you come on the property and test it. And then something, I don't know, just oil, right? Say, oil gets found on their property. And and is that considered a liability as long as their insurance purposes, for their fire protection ratings, you know, I mean, all that kind of stuff? I can see some long-term unintended consequences to something like this. So I just wouldn't like those answers. I know you might not have them tonight.
Sure.
I would just be interested in.
And I.
In them.
I kind of take, I don't like to kick the can down the road. I kind of like to address stuff if we can.
Okay.
So I think this really would educate the property owner, help them with the tools. Here's a revolving loan program that can help you clean up the site and then sell it, get it to the highest best use. So I look at it as more of a positive if they find something, not necessarily a negative or a hindrance.
It is key to utilize the EPA funding for a site evaluation if the site is going to be a redeveloped new use intent. If you have a property that's sitting idle and that property owner has no interest to do something further with the site, different, more productive, then they won't get through the screening rounds by the EPA at the federal agency. So we actually have to take the forms that are submitted. If it meets the criteria, then we would elevate it to the EPA at the federal level and they give the check balances as to what sites would be clear to do the phase one, phase two, or asbestos or internal building assessment. But just because a land is there, as you're kind of saying, I just want to know, it's not going to meet the criteria to to expend those dollars for cleanup assessments. But the the flip side would be if they did want to do something, they would have this report done and they wouldn't have to pay for it, right?
Right. And if they are looking to make the asset more productive or redevelop it, they have to do this testing.
Have to do it anyway. So this program helps them pay for that.
It saves money on the development side and or the personal ownership side. Because they'll have to expend it at some point if that is the true intent of the asset.
So it could make it easier to sell your property, redevelop it, or have this done. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Now, there's a lot involved, it sounds like, and and a lot, a lot of complications just on you, your guys' end of trying to figure it all out. But thanks for having us a part of that. And and we'll see how we can just support that as we need to. Anything else? Okay, thank you for the information. Okay. All right, our next one, so Kimberly, you can just stay up here, is our Woodman Hall presentation. Oh, and we have so it's going to be our Fountain Urban Renewal Authority Chair, Mr. Paul Aragon. How are you? And Kimberly, are you coming back up? Are you going to let him take it?
I'm on site, cheers.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the invite to be here. I'd just like to, just in a second, just publicly thank our city's leadership. These are some trying times that we're in, a lot of difficult decisions being made these days. And just thanks for your strength, your stability during this time. Keep doing what you're doing and loving on our community and helping pave a way forward. We we really need it. So thank you so much. Hey, quick presentation on Woodman Hall to bring you up to speed. Slide number one here shows the historical property that we're also proud of. It's about two years ago when FIRA was able to acquire this property and this was huge for us. We have a big vision to create a sense of place in the Fountain Valley community. You know, a lot of people live here, but they don't really play here and they don't spend enough money here. So our hope would be to continue to create lots of great venues and places where people do want to come and stay and play and spend some money here here. And what greater place than to take Woodman Hall, which is such a tremendous asset for pretty much the duration of Fountain and try to try to populate it with people and create more of a magnet down here. So we acquired it two years ago. We quickly had an open house because there was beaming curiosity. What does this place look like? You know, a lot of people hadn't been in there. So we we opened it up for that. Shortly after, in two thousand and nineteen, we hired a group called Tremble Design Group, architects and engineer firm that came in and just did an assessment on the structural condition, given the age of it, as well as the historical condition of the building and begin to create for us a blueprint on moving forward. You'll notice in slide number three here that the existing structure is three floors, about twenty-seven hundred and thirty foot per floor. So pretty substantial sized building when you take the three floors in conjunction. Slide number four are some of the code compliance issues and public safety issues that we face moving forward. It's a pretty healthy list there. But at least we have it on paper. We know what we have to tackle. We know what's ahead of us. And we are very committed to to trying to get some of these things done and begin to move them forward. And we're prioritizing them, trying to put the the dollars that we have towards each of them to take the property forward. But given the age and some of the challenges, it of course takes some time and some money to be able to do that. In slide number five, we just want to quickly give you an update on our timeline. The first one to three years, which we're in, you know, year two at this point in time. We are trying to deal with one of the public safety issues that will also be an aesthetic feature of the building. And that is a firescape on the north side of the building. It will update all that. We have hired a company to be able to do that for us. It's going to be historically accurate. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be very well done. It's going to help our tenants on the second floor, but it's also going to bring a greater level of aesthetic beauty to that building. So we're excited about that. And that may be happening here in the next couple of months. So we'll be able to watch that progress take place. At the same time, we're doing some minor interior retrofits to help with the newly acquired business for that property and to make that second floor a little more functional. As we move ahead, we have some exciting plans for that main level. And that's really where we want to cast a lot of vision. And we can go ahead and just show you the final slide here. And I'll I'll come back to this slide in just a moment. You could just keep clicking through, please. Oh, gotcha. 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 I just wanted to show you the final so you can really see what the vision of that first floor would look like. Okay. Yeah. So we'll get to it here, but you'll see this final rendering. If we can get Woodman Hall to look anything like this, who wouldn't be thrilled to spend some time down there? I mean, as we look out to our right, some of your left, I mean, just imagine what that would do to our community. And there are a lot of businesses that have expressed interest. But it is going to take some time to get the property to where we can, we can actually put someone there. And we want to make the the right decision for what's going to be best for our community. And we just really feel like if we can move this thing forward, it's going to create a lot of momentum in this downtown area that I think a lot, a lot of us long for. So we do have an immediate vision for the next couple of years and then a three to seven year vision that I think will really bring more of this into fruition. So we appreciate your patience. We know a lot of people are interested in the building. But once again, we only have so deep of pockets. We have big vision, but it's going to take a little bit to get there. So we appreciate your patience in the process. So I thank you for a couple moments to bring you up to speed. Appreciate all of your support for this particular endeavor and the partnership that you have with FIRA. Kimberly, would you like to add anything?
I would just equally like to express the only way we are going to be successful in the long-term vision is if the community supports the businesses that come into this area and partner with us on this large asset investment in our core. So it's really keen that the community understands that messaging as well.
Yeah. And and so also, one of our first tenants is actually just, and she was here tonight, I think she, did she leave?
Yes, at six thirty.
Oh, okay. So Zenery Yoga is, I think, is what her, the name of her, her yoga studio is. And so she's, it's upstairs. I haven't been in it, but I've seen pictures on on Facebook and it it looks really nice. And so she's one of our first tenants to actually utilize that building in a way that we've been hoping for all these years. And so very excited for her and and those who who do yoga. So if you get an opportunity, I know she's been out at the park a lot. She does a lot of classes outside and she hopes to both have class and do some filming of classes as well as to do some online stuff for some people as well. So very excited for that and and the future of that building. And for so long, it kind of sat in disrepair and we were able to to get it and start to revitalize it. And as Paul said, it's going to take some time. It's going to take some effort. But hopefully, eventually, we'll we'll see the fruits of those labors really start coming through now and with some of the improvements that we're looking at. And so thank you to to Paul and and FIRA for really kind of taking charge and and moving forward with that. And Kimberly, your leadership and just making sure we're we're moving forward and and making that really a central piece of this downtown area, you know, we I'm really looking forward to what what really can come out of that building and just a little bit of of history on my end. I, you know, I'm almost ninety-eight percent positive, this is where my my grandparents had their wedding reception is in in the building there. And so it's 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 been a part of this community for a very long time. And so I'm just very excited about what what can occur.
Yeah, we'd like to share that the exterior is really the remaining remnants of the historicalness of the property. The interior has been pretty carved up, modified, not really permitted well over its decades of eras. And so we really are just trying to make sure that we can unpolish a gem and bring back as much as possible within a fiscal budget management.
Right, yeah.
Proceedings.
Yeah, looking forward to it. So any questions from council for Paul or Kimberly?
Kimberly, this is, this is gorgeous. This is, this is, this, I don't know how else to say it. This is gorgeous. Very nice.
It's interesting. Some, some developers have seen the rendering in the architect's studio and they immediately know what it is.
Really?
Without a label on it.
Interesting. Yeah. The, I think the railing in the back is going to really bring a lot of people out and start to see some of the you know, like you said, the hidden gem inside this. So this is really nice. Thank you. Kimberly, just a push. So you said, we really need people to get down here and spend money to help support this, you know, because they do get a small portion for, FIRA gets a small portion back of the sales tax dollars or something, right?
Well, it is within the Old Town District, which is part of the US eighty-five urban renewal area.
Right, yes, right. So the more money you spend down here in town, it it helps fund this project.
I would say the more money spent anywhere within our valley of eighty-five will help us with the planning of funding that particular project. Right, Paul? Yeah.
And this is small business week. What is it? For one dollar, you spend in your community, like forty or fifty cents of it stays here?
Actually, it's up to sixty cents per dollar. If you spend in your local economy and then, of course, you support the families that operate those small businesses. That's why it's pretty special to acknowledge that. pretty special to acknowledge that this week, under the proclamation we did a little earlier this evening. Yes.
And that is going to help have the funding to do projects like this.
It will, yes.
Yeah, so.
As well as some other beautification we have.
And then we have the survey online that we're kind of looking at the surrounding areas, so on the city website, Facebook page, right, is a link to the survey that came out.
So, the placemaking campaign has kicked off yesterday. It is in our courtyard as well as visually online, for those participants to give us our feedback that we really need to start cultivating the warmth and the, not the entryway, but the approach into this district, and that you've entered into a historical, special sense of place for our community.
So, now is the time to give your feedback.
Please do. We've had a lot of good feedback already in our first twenty-four hours, so we would love to continue that momentum through the end of the week.
Good. Okay, and, and once again, thank you to the Fura, the board, and for people who don't know, it's, it's a, a group of people who are business leaders, and they're, they have, a lot of them have small businesses, a lot of them do those, those sort of things, and they are experts in what they do, and they bring a lot of expertise to that board, and it really, I think for me, who's someone who is an expert in business and doesn't know a lot about that sort of thing, but sitting on that board, I, I've learned a lot from that group of people, and so, I just appreciate everything that you guys do and, and for the city and, and what we have going on, so thank you. Okay. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, next is Board Commission Committee Appointments, which we have none tonight, so we'll go ahead and move on. Item number five, City Council Agenda Requests and Announcements. I will start with Ms. Duncan. Anything tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I attended CML's virtual conference that they had last, last week. That was a very good conference. Also, was glad to hear that things that any of the conferences that they had, they're available through September the twenty-seventh, so we can also download that. I also saw some of the other council members online. I've also attended the Gallagher Education Month events. I'm learning a great deal of information about the Gallagher Amendment. I hear there's more to come in November, so I'm really excited about those. This weekend, we had a weekend filled of helping others and giving back to our Fountain Valley community. Cross Creek Church and New Jerusalem Church combined services this weekend within the community. It was really wonderful to be a part of that. We had cans donated. I participated in the toy drive donation, and also we were in the park for the services, and all I could think about was, you know, the glory of God and how I'm so blessed to be in a community where we can get together. You know, there's so much hate and different things going on in our community, and to be out there and to have people worshiping and worshiping together was beautiful. So, if you missed that, I'm sure they're planning on doing another one, so that was wonderful to be there.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Geek?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
You're on.
Just one thing. I, I got to chair the Wright Pike Peak Regional Building Meeting, and it was pretty interesting because we had the AIA people there, and there's a whole lot of new stuff that came down from the legislature this year. Some of the more interesting ones, like you don't have to be a licensed architect to do interior design now. So, that was kind of shocking. I'd never heard of that, but there's several other things in there. And if anybody in construction is interested, they need to look that up and see what those new things are. There's quite a few changes. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Estes, anything tonight?
Just a big shout out to Paul and Kimberly for doing the Fura stuff. The rendering is gorgeous, and I'm so excited that that historic building is remaining part of this community, and it's going to be a vital part of this community, so I really thank you for all the work on that. I've been attending the CML Conference. It was the district conference for us this time, and it was an interesting meeting. It was kind of fun to meet with other council and people from cities within our area, was I think Teller in El Paso County. And then I've been doing the Gallagher Amendment stuff, because that's a ballot. That's Amendment B on the ballot this year, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Actually, I wanted to do a, a quick shout out to the PD and Fire Department for traffic control in the morning and afternoon with the detour that's going on for the old Pueblo Road construction. Detouring up through Jimmy Camp has the potential to be a complete nightmare in the morning and afternoon, and the PD and Fire Department have done an exceptionally good job of keeping traffic moving along and safely, and in addition to their help with keeping all the busy intersections safe, their presence has managed to slow an awful lot of people down on Jimmy Camp that have been using that road as, with it being a detour. Before the PD was out yesterday, I saw some guys going at least sixty on that road. And then, and you can almost hear the cartoony screeching brake noise when the first PD showed up, and the guys are had to come to a normal speed again. It's nice to see them going down there, and it's also nice to see them out there as a reminder to the kids that are starting to drive and coming back to school, and whether they want to be at school or not is immaterial. They're driving entirely too fast on that road. So, their presence is also very welcome for that respect, and I appreciate that. Just the way they're handling it and keeping smiles on the faces, and when people were stopped at the corners, like watching Lieutenant Mal just talk to somebody and explain what's going on and doing, in, in such a nice way, the guy pulled up to her, started yelling at her, and then within twenty seconds, he's driving away slowly with a smile. And to see that kind of thing, it's just, those guys deserve kind of a shout out for going out of their way to take care of that situation. Until it's done, that's all for me.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
They're taking masks off.
No, that's all right. I trust you. All right. Yeah, I know. No, that's, thanks. You know, just to jump on what Greg said, and, you know, I've seen a lot of criticism about, about the roadwork, and I, I come back to, it's got to get done at some point, and there's timing involved, and it's not something they chose to do at this certain time. It's just the way it works. We've got to go through our processes to make sure we, we're in line to get that project started, as well as those companies who are doing a lot of that work has to be ready, and they've got their own projects that are going on in other parts of the county and, and places, and so, yeah, no time's a good time, unless it's in the middle of the night, in the middle of summer, but that's just not a reality, and so, just please bear with us during this, this week, and we, we hope to be done by this weekend, and, and and life will be, get back to normal again next week as far as the roads go. But it's a, it's one of those necessary evils when, when we have increased congestion, we have increased traffic. Those things just, just, they're something we have to deal with every now and then, and, and in our little city, as, as we continue to grow, it's going to become a bigger reality in the future, and I, I saw a comment recently about, you know, I moved to Fountain because of the small-town feel and a small-town nature of things, and, and while I think a lot of us did that or were here because of that, the reality is, is growth is happening, and it's going to happen around us. We can't stop it. We could say, okay, not in the city of Fountain, which is fine. We could definitely have that approach and say, we, we don't want growth anymore in the city of Fountain. However, our, our boundaries are small in, in the bigger picture of the county, and the county is going to go ahead and allow it to happen anyway. We have no control of what happens in the county, and that's the key, that's the key part of this whole conversation, is we don't have control of what's going on in the county. They have, you know, and they, they may argue with me, and they may not like these comments, but their, their rules are a lot more lax than ours is, and, and we've, we've tried to put a lot of controls on, on, on developers to ensure that they are following the rules and processes that are going to benefit not just them, but the entirety of the city, including those who are on the outskirts of our city, who live in the county and, and rely on what we, we have to offer, and so, you know, when, when growth started here fifteen years ago, we weren't ready. We didn't have a staff that was able to, to deal with the growth. We didn't have a staff that, that really had the expertise, and, and we've had to slowly grow with that and, and bring in the right people who, who, who know how to battle those things, and, and then you have to get a council on board who, who's willing to, to stand up for the community as well, and, and push back on, on developers when, when they used to just kind of had free rein, so, you know, I apologize that we've got to go through these things with things like traffic and, and those sort of things, but again, it's a necessary evil that, that we will continue to work for and, and ensure that we've got the best possible services available to us with, with whatever we have working, and just know that, that we're working together up here, along with the community, to, to ensure that we're providing those services the best we can. You know, and I think we're doing a really good job considering where we are in the world pre-pandemic, to where we are present pandemic, and hopefully where we're going to be post-pandemic. And, you know, we've had some fortunate things going our way, but we're going to continue working forward and, and moving, moving past this, and, and again, it'll be a week, and in five days, it'll all be just a sweet memory that we can move past, so please bear with us, and as we move through that, as far as those types of things go. I, there was one other thing I wanted to mention tonight, and I can't remember what that was, so we will go ahead and move forward to item number six. Oh, no, I, I know what it was. Trunk or Treat is coming up, and we're looking for people to be a part of that, right? And as far as, you want to go ahead and speak to that, Scott?
Sure, you bet. On October thirtieth, we're planning on holding Trunk or Treat. That'll be from six PM to eight PM in Metcalf Park, and the idea is to do a drive-through type of event for, for families, so that they will drive through it there in their vehicles, and we'll hand out candy, a bag of candy for each kid at the beginning. But then we're looking for is this? Interested organizations to support different Halloween displays along the, the driving route. So, I think we have space, space for sixty-some-odd participants to participate and put together some Halloween displays. We're, we're reaching out to the different participants we've had in the past, as well as others who may be interested. So, kind of excited. I think it could be a lot of fun. It'll be our first year trying this, but I think it could be a lot of fun moving forward.
Right, and, and with that, you know, when Halloween's coming, it's been a big question with a lot of families is to, are the cities going to allow us to do it? I, you know, I hope that we don't have to get involved with that, and, and it's really going to be the responsibility of you as, as someone who sits and passes out candy, if that's something you want to take on, that you, you're responsible, responsible about it. You wear your mask, you, 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 you do the best possible practices available to that, and, and if you're willing to take your kids out on that, you, you do the best you can as a parent to protect them and, and allow that for that to happen. But this is kind of the, the best opportunity to wear a mask is, is on Halloween, so you, you, hopefully it'll all work out fine, so. But we, we wanted to ensure that we could at least have one event here in the city that, that we can do safely, and so, this is that one that we think we can do it, and it'll really minimize the amount of interaction that we have with everybody, and so, it's just like that. We'll have a bag of candy for everyone in the car. You'll get that first off, and you take a drive around. It's kind of like, in some cities where they have drive-through Christmas light things, and so, kind of the same thing, except it'll be more, more of a Halloween nature, and, and everyone will be socially distant, and drive through, and you're on to your next thing for the evening, and so, here's hoping, and if you want to be a part of that, just get ahold of the city. I think you can look on the website and find that information, and yeah, you can set up a booth or a car there to, to be a part of that, so thanks for that, and, and we do have, do we have a movie night in a park coming up? Nope, are we done with this? Okay, I thought there was. I think I missed it already, so. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number six. Public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. And we ask that you sign up with the clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Now, so since we are doing this both in person and virtually, I'm going to go with the people I have here, because I have their cards, and I know they want to speak, and I've gotten a couple of emails from folks who want to speak tonight online, and so, if you are online and you want to speak, just make sure you get your little hand, and I will just go in order that they are. I'm not going to go in any particular order there, so I'll just go from top to bottom with those. And again, online, it's a little bit harder because you don't have the, the luxury of the lights that we have here to kind of give you a timer, so when you're online and I call on you, just kind of take note of the time, and I will as well on your computer, and then you'll have three minutes to, to speak, and then we will respond how we need to. So, starting with the people in person, I am going to start with Ms. Jean Smith. Please come forward.
Take my mask off, so you can see my lips moving. Jean Smith, Widefield resident. I read in the Fountain Valley newspaper about the proposed rate increase for utilities and about the substation that is being built for utilities out east. I commend City Council for planning ahead and for the utility department and seeing that this need is coming, and not only for growth, but in case there should be an electrical emergency. I have a question or some questions and concern. My first question is, will there be a workshop or public meetings to give us information about this rate increase and about what's being planned and the need for them? Also, will, or will it only be public when you vote on the rate increase in a public hearing? And the next question is, will there be space provided so that we can have more than eight people attend that public meeting? I know you're working around rules and regulations from the state. I have one concern, and that is the rate increase of four percent. My understanding is that is an average. I have heard that the less utility electricity that I use, the higher my cost will be, and that the more electricity through my computer, whatever, the lower my rate will be. So, I'd like some clarification either when we have public meetings on that, or if you can address that now. But again, I'm not opposed to the substation. I think it's a great idea and something that you're looking ahead and that is needed.
And thank you. I'll, I'll kind of start us off, and I think Scott's going to speak as well. So, on that substation, it's, it's, yeah, we're looking ahead, but we're also, it's, it's one of those things that we need just for redundancy and ensuring that we have something drastic would occur to one, one of our two lines that, that run into the city that we're able to keep going, so that's kind of where that is, but yeah, you're right. It's, it's, it's really about with all that growth that's coming out east, that we want to be able to provide electricity, and so, Scott, I don't know what else you had.
The, the only thing, is this working?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to add is, yes, there will be public participation, and yes, we'll be working with probably, hopefully, this real similar tool that we're using tonight, which hopefully is working at least as far as the video piece goes at that time, but to allow more than just a small group of people to participate, because it's really important that, that public feedback, for sure. And then at that time, they'll be able to provide any detailed data, information, questioning, answering any questions.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not, we're not on a time crunch, like it needs to be done by a certain time.
Right.
So, if, if we need to have two public meetings to really make sure we get as many people, we can do that, but let's see how the first one goes, and.
I think they actually have planned a couple.
Have they planned a couple? Okay.
Would that be published in the paper?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Another thing, Jean, a lot of people don't think of. One other thing a lot of people don't think of when they think of energy increase, that it's all coming from growth. If everybody in the city bought an electric car and plugged it in at five o'clock in the evening, we probably would have an issue. So, we do need more power for a variety of reasons, because people are using a lot of more energy in their homes in general.
I have no problem with the rate increase.
I'm just, I'm just saying, though, that's another thing that a lot of people don't think of.
I just think it should be fair and equitable, so that we all pay the same. Like, my dollar doesn't, I, you know, I think the article said if I went back and looked at my rate, but I probably could, years passed, I would be paying less because of some things that have been put in place, buying electricity in this community in the last few years. However, my dollars aren't going as far, so that it is costing me more. However, my dollars aren't going as far so that it is costing me more when I'm trying to be cut back and be very conservative. And I, I just think that it, we all pay the same.
And, and so the other part of that, I know one of your questions, um, and the, the other common, it's not a misconception. I don't think people really understand is this isn't just for city residents. This is for city utility customers.
Right.
Because we have a lot of people who don't live in a city, but do um, access our utilities, especially electricity. Um, so you may not live in a city, but you will be able to have a um, a, a voice because you, you are actually a customer who pays for this. So um, that will, like yourself. So um, yeah, definitely that will be available to, to all customers. Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, um, I'm going to look to our other attendees. Ms. Kaut, you have anything? You have anything tonight? Okay, all right. Um, I'm going to go ahead and move over to online and I have, it looks like um, four or five lights. Okay, I'm going to start with uh, Ms. Kircher. So um, those of you who are online, um, I think I can unmute you, but a lot of times people are self-muted. So if I unmute you, you have to unmute yourself as well. And right now, so Ms. Kircher, you are self-muted. You will need to uh, unmute your mic and then I think you can begin talking. Okay, your light, or your, your green, want to speak?
Okay. I'm, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask, it's the entrance to the utility entrance to the back of the park at um, Janitelle School. There's a sidewalk area on Fountain Mesa and um, it is really in very bad condition. And I'm wondering if we could identify who is responsible for that sidewalk and can we get that sidewalk fixed as quick as possible?
And I spoke to Sylvia today. I know you've been in uh, email contact with Sylvia. And I'm going to get with the county to find out what their timeline is on reconstructing that intersection. I also got with our street superintendent. So based off that, we want to make sure that we don't throw good money uh, if that whole area is going to be torn up uh, in a short timeframe. And if they don't, uh, let's say their construction may not occur until next summer. We do know they have the financing and they're working on that. Then we will go down and we will just put a temporary patch on that so that it is walkable. And you're right, it is in bad shape. So we'll get something temporarily patched on that so that we don't put a large amount of taxpayer money into that that the county will turn around and tear up. So uh, I've, Sylvia got me working on it today and we'll get you an answer here in the next couple of days.
Thank you very much and it's also, cheers to.
Right, and Susan, I just wanted to add to that real quickly. I did um, do some negotiations with the school district and they are willing to do some cost sharing uh, to repair that location. We're hoping to get it, of course, ADA compliant. Um, but to reduce that hill in that area would take a little bit more work. But if that's the case and, and the county has a longer term plan, then we will work with the school district to get that repaired temporarily.
Very good, thank you both very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kircher. Okay, I've got emails here and I'm looking there, I think uh, they are online as well, so let me make sure. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and start. And so um, it looks like we have at least two, probably three or four that are, um, it sounds like about the sign ordinance. So I'm going to go ahead and let um, uh, my next one would be Ms. Rosenbaum. So if it says you're muted still, let me see if I can unmute you real quick. Okay, you're good to go, Ms. Rosenbaum?
All right, is it all right if you ask Brenna Payne to go first? I'm actually after her.
Payne. Hold on. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brenna Payne. I'm here to bring up an issue I feel strongly about. Thank you for providing a platform for us to be heard tonight. Nearly a year ago in November of 2019, your council began the process of revising the regulations of signs placed within the city of Fountain. At that meeting in November, it was voted that signs would be permitted over the weekends and during the month of October through the Wednesday following Novem- the November elections. Signs would be limited in size and signs may not block the right of way or wheelchair access. In January of this year, the sign issue was revisited. Since it was found that signs being posted in October were specifically made to allow for political signage, it was deemed not to be content neutral as required by law. Council therefore voted to, to completely eliminate sign, signage. I find this sweeping ban of signage to be in violation of our First Amendment rights of free speech. I hope that you'll listen to the following individuals as they go over some important cases within Colorado and elsewhere that point to why we believe the ban infringes on our First Amendment rights. Additionally, at this time due to the COVID-19 pandemic, signage is one of the only ways for messages to be, for our messages to be heard. Instead of banning signage outright, will the city council consider sign permitting? For example, a fee of $100 gets you a 45 to 60 day permit. The fee can help cover the cost of enforcement and removal if necessary. This will renew our First Amendment rights and help solve the problem of overuse of signs and cleanup. If it's okay, if you don't mind um, unmuting Renee Reeve, who will speak about a case uh, that she found that's relevant to this cause.
Go ahead. Okay, uh, Ms. Reeve? You're unmuted, you can speak. Okay, she did. Okay, that's, um, she's not. Uh, Ms. Reeve, if you're um, speaking, we can't hear you, um, and you are unmuted on our end. So um, if the next person would like to speak, I don't know. I will uh, unmute. Ms. Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Reeve.
Can you hear me?
I can he- who's this?
This is Renee Reeve.
Okay, now, now we can hear you, go ahead. Yes.
Ah, okay, I'm not sure what that was about. I don't usually have problems. Anyway, I'm presenting the Mahaney v. Englewood case. It's a Colorado case from 2009. And the spec- the first point around this is uh, that signs are protected speech under the First Amendment and arbitrary restrictions on the placement or use of signs is unlawful. Um, the co- in this case, the court sided with the shop owner citing the First Amendment freedom of speech issues. And the important takeaways on this case uh, is what is the legitimate valid purpose of the restriction on the free speech? What is the review process for approving or denying any free speech signs? And for any speech that is allowed, why is it allowed and others are not allowed? And can that be shown to be legitimate? Um, I want to point out uh, under content neutral regulations, um, there's the three-point test. To be constitutional, your content neutral regulation must pass a three-point test. It has to be justified by substantial government interest. It has to be narrowly tailored, although not least restrictive, to achieve that interest. And it has to leave ample alternative avenues of communication. And that is the part of the piece that we are extremely concerned about. Uh, the next, this last point of the ample alternative avenues of communication is this, as a consideration. Please uh, allow for um, allow me to turn it over now to Gillian Freeland, who's going to speak to this. For Gillian Freeland?
Good evening, yes, this is Gillian Freeland. I would like to bring your attention to the 1995 case in Colorado Springs, the Colorado Springs v. 2354, Inc. case. In this case, the court was attempting to restrict them based on the aesthetic qualities of their sign. And therefore, they broke the content neutral restrictions that Colorado Springs has uh, adopted. And additionally, in the 1994 Supreme Court of the United States decision in City of Ladue v. Galeo, um, they held that aesthetic restrictions on posting signage was an unconstitutional violation of the First Amendment right to free speech. Uh, this case is instructive because it adopts and utilizes the Supreme Court's holding that any restrictions on free speech must be done from a content neutral position. And I will share my observation in the last week of seeing signs for I-9 Sports, um, for the I-Hall, I-Move Company, for a variety of the um, We Buy Houses for Cash, and additionally for uh, County Commissioner candidate, uh, Mr. Longinos Gonzalez. And so my question to the board is um, if this is an enforcement issue or if uh, the constitutional implications will be considered in allowing uh, political candidates to exercise their free speech rights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Rosenbaum?
Hey, how are you all? Thank you for offering up the uh, online platform. One of the cool things about COVID, it increases access. So I'm Liz Rosenbaum, also a candidate for House District 21 here in the Fountain Valley area. I do not directly live in the Fountain City limits, but I am running to represent the people who live here. And I've worked with many of the community members over the last four years for clean and safe drinking water and federal funding for our facilities. Campaigning during COVID safety measures is quite unique. I've chosen to follow the health guidelines of social distancing and doing the vast majority of my outreach done quite differently than usual. I've been following and inquiring about the ban on yard signs in Fountain City and um, several other people have already presented who are also concerned about it being a violation of First Amendment rights. It's not like it was done intentionally, however, with COVID happening and limited access to people in certain communities, um, it makes it difficult to get the word out in some areas. I know that the decision to ban the signs was referred to um, non-elected people, city staff, and that City Councilwoman Sharon Thompson is correct that it is a violation of free speech. And now that we have new members on the city council who have also expressed this ban as a violation of free speech for candidates with or without COVID restrictions. So in 1981, there was a court decision of Lakewood versus Colfax Unlimited Association. The court ruled banning signs is a violation of free speech and it is acceptable to limit the amount of signs, size of the signs and time periods for signs to be displayed. Also in 1981, Williams versus Denver states that restrictions are valid if they do not fully restrict speech and so long as they do not favor or restrict one type of content over another. Yard signs are being displayed throughout your city. We buy houses, a lot of the other bandit signs, farmers markets, city hall, churches. A lot of great pieces of information that are necessary for small communities. I suggest a fair and immediate reversal of your sign ban in this city. And in the meantime, discuss a way to make it an income-producing activity for your city and for citizens to feel more heard here. And I appreciate you um, giving me an opportunity to phone in.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Rosenbaum. And uh, I just, a couple of clarification points on, on some of the things um, that were said. Um, we didn't vote to allow s- signs during a certain time. That was a suggestion as we were going through the process. So it was never a um, uh, this is where we're, this is our new rule. It was, it was uh, as, as stated before, it was a process that we were going through with the sign code and, and ensuring that we're um, uh, however, we were going to go forward. That was one of the suggestions um, was for the, the campaign signs. Um, and I can tell you, we did that through this um, with our attorney um, on the legalities and, and um, as far as what he's looked up and researched and, and we, you know, we, we try to make decisions that are legally defensible and I think we, we are in that realm. And um, the signs that were referenced tonight that uh, that you're seeing, um, it sounds like it is an enforcement issue. And so we have um, taken some notes on those and, and we'll have code enforcement out um, to look at those over the next few days to make sure those are removed if they are in the public right of way to make sure that uh, everybody's following the rules. Um, and again, these are signs that uh, or these are not allowed just really on, on public right of way. Um, if you want to have them on your, uh, on, on your neighbor's yards or if, if people are agreeing to put them on wherever they have their own property, that's, that's uh, allowed to anybody as it is. This is again, just in public right of way. So um, it, I would encourage you to, uh, if you need to, you may um, speak with uh, Troy Johnson, our, uh, the city attorney who really helped shape this and, and ensure that we weren't um, uh, because that's, that's not what the intention was on this was to um, uh, limit uh, First Amendment rights, because that's, that's not what this is about. It's really um, it was about the code and, and what we were uh, doing and, and working with um, how we move forward with the city on that. So um, thank you for your comments and um, again, uh, Ms. Rosenbaum and team. I know um, if, if you uh, would like that we can uh, you can certainly get with Troy and go over those things. Todd, did you have anything more you wanted to, um, nope?
So I do have a question, Mayor.
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, this is Liz Rosenbaum. I do find it unique that this was decided on before uh, new city council ran for office to be elected and that no considerations would be made during COVID for outreach. To me, it's an intentional freedom of speech violation when all other um,
No, uh, Ms. Rosenbaum.
Options have been.
The current council was, was on um, during that time. Uh, they did, they did vote on this. And, and it was pre-COVID, so we had no idea that, that we had a pandemic staring down the.
Right, but we do now so we can make an allowance.
Well, I'll leave that up to the rest of the council. I can tell you personally, I'm not really, um, we, I mean, we.
I would like to hear from the other council members if they feel this is a freedom of speech violation.
Okay, and, and again, you can, you can again, further discussion with our city attorney and, and we can go from there. But as far as we, we're concerned, I think we're, we're, we're okay with what we did and, and um, it was a seven to zero vote on that.
Any of your faces, I think it is fair to request a comment from city council members. Because right now, you're just speaking on their behalf and I can't see if they're agreeing with you or not.
Okay, uh, well, I'll open it up to council members. If you would like to speak on this, you may. I'm, I'm just gonna, if you want to speak, you can speak. I'm not going to call down everybody if, if, if you're comfortable with the decision that we made and, and, and are okay with that. Oh, it was 6-1, I'm sorry. I, I do apologize for that. I think you were the, Ms. Thompson was the lone uh, vote.
Yes, she was.
Yeah, okay. Uh, no one's um, jumping to speak, so go ahead.
I'd like to state though, that I put this out on Facebook, Nextdoor, multiple, multiple social media posts about this, asking people and businesses for their input on this sign code for weeks before we voted on this. We even postponed this section of the code, you know, code, trying to get more input from citizens. And I heard from one person. So um, you know, and it was brought up multiple times about the inconveniences it could cause during um, the political season and some of the problems. And um, you know, as candidates have talked to me, I've stated to them to read the code, follow it. City council speaks. The city council speaks for the citizens and this what they voted on. And if you put signs in the wrong place, they're going to be thrown in the trash. So find a lot of friends and neighbors and call up people that are in your political party and ask them to, you know, put a sign in their yard. That it's just, it is what it is right now. And I don't think, I don't, while I was alone, no vote on it. I don't feel a rush to make any changes in it right now just because we're in a pandemic. So, you know, yeah, it is a little bit more difficult. But we're, everybody's having to be creative, everybody.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, hold on, Ms. Rosenbaum, checking to see if anybody else would like to.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not seeing any lights or anything, so I think that's, that's consensus there. And so thank you for bringing your concerns and, and, and this is one of those things that it comes up and, and we have the discussion. And, and I forgot that we had even tabled this portion of that discussion for a longer discussion and, and we got nobody, so we will, you know.
Sounds good.
Like, how it goes this, this go around and rather than changing it because I wasn't paying attention, so.
I think a lot of people were frustrated at that point after the hailstorm, the thousands and thousands of signs that were around town for months.
Well, frankly, I hear it during election season, people just don't like it. And so that's, that was kind of the one thing I did hear a lot of was, you know, that this was just one of those things. So again, you, you're, the group is more than welcome to, to call up the attorney and go over the legalities of, of the things that you found. But we, we made sure we were not infringing on anybody's rights and, and doing that, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. All right, thank you for your time.
All right. With that, anything else on public to be heard? Everybody has spoken tonight on that. Okay, all right, we will move on to our consent agenda. Item number seven, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items A and B. What would council like to do? Ms. Estes. Our lights are working tonight, so please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, item eight, old business, we had no items under old business, item nine, new business, nothing was removed from the consent agenda. So we'll do item nine B, resolution number two zero dash zero seven five, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2020 budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis, are you still here?
I am still here. Good evening, council. John Lewis, Finance Director. As you are aware, nothing can be spent and nothing is spent without your prior approval. And on November 19th of 2019, you adopted the budget for the city for the year ended 2020. Then on April 28th, you amended that budget due to the fact that we had a number of capital items that were started in 2019 had not been completed in 2019. So we need to also have your approval to, to finish those capital items in 2020. There were also some additional items that came to light that needed your attention and, and you gave it that attention and appropriated those amounts. Then again, on July 28th, there were also some additional items for various reasons that were required expenditures and we therefore recommended that you appropriate those amounts and you did. We now have two additional items and one of those is due to a donation that has been committed by Colo Trust for an ADA swing out at Fountain Mesa Park. They are going to commit $5,000 and therefore we would like your approval to spend that $5,000 on an ADA swing. If, if you could please move this slide to the, to exhibit A. Okay. There we go, so we would be getting revenue of $5,000 and ask your approval therefore to spend that on the ADA swing. The, there is no net increase or decrease to the unrestricted reserves in the general fund. On the electric fund side, we would like to put some high voltage lines in and install them towards the Jimmy Camp substation. And, you know, someone came up earlier and was talking about rate increase in electric. Here's, here's a reason why. $2,950,000 to put in those high voltage lines and, and buy the cable. So we're asking for your approval to go ahead and, and spend that money out of the electric fund. That would decrease the unrestricted net position of the electric fund. It does have the funds to spend for that. So this, if you do approve this, we would amend the 2020 budget according to city financial policies. And this amendment would be included in our 2020 budget to comply with Colorado State regulations. So with that, I would ask for your approval of resolution twenty dash oh seven five.
Okay, questions for John? Okay, seeing no questions, what would we like to do? Oh. Sorry, Mr. Rick.
No problem, Mr. Rick. Gordon, Rick. Mr. Lewis, two questions. When council approved the $2.5 million for the substation out east, is this money in addition to that $2.5 million? Or is that the $2.5 million that was already agreed to?
This is in addition.
Okay. And then just a general question, sir. With the COVID, a lot of economies, local governments are struggling with their tax revenues. How are we doing year-to-date in Fountain on our, our sales tax revenues?
We are doing, we're actually up over our budget and up over last year. So surprisingly, we, we, I guess we could say we've been positively impacted due to the fact that so many of our residents that used to spend money, spend dollars in sit-down restaurants and malls in Color Springs and Denver instead of buying online and we're receiving those tax revenues. Now, the electric fund does not receive any of those tax revenues, but it, it is a good news that, that we are, we have increased sales tax revenues over and above our forecast.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the, the cool thing about that, Mr. Rick, is, you know, it was, it was awesome when I used to buy on Amazon and didn't have to pay any sales tax. But because I didn't have to go to the springs anymore and I just have to go anywhere and just, and it could show up a day or two later. But now because of the Amazon and Ebays and all that, we're now collecting sales tax for the city fountain where a lot of people were going up to the springs and spending that money and all that leakage we had. We're actually seeing that stay here, which has been, the timing was perfect on that one. And so we, it kind of blew us away when we first started seeing those numbers rolling each month, March, April, and May, and a holy cow. So, you know, I spoke earlier this summer at the mayor's panel and they talked about, you know, those things. And I said, you know, we're doing great. And people didn't believe me, but that, that's the reason why. And so, and of course Lowe's was like super busy during the pandemic. And so, because everyone was doing remodels. So, you know, just those things alone have really helped us stay where we are and actually do a little bit better, so that's great.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Okay, now council, what would you like to do with this, Mr. App, or Mr. Applegate?
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash seven five zero seven five.
Okay, and Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Item number nine C, first reading of, let me start over. First reading of ordinance number one seven four nine, an ordinance of the City of Fountain, Colorado approving the refinancing of its utility revenue bonds, series 2011, for the purpose of decreasing debt service expenses over the remaining term of the bond debt and for paying the cost of the refinancing and providing details and documents in connection with the bonds. Mr. Lewis?
John Lewis, Finance Director, once again. We issued bonds in 2011 through the Colorado Water and Power Authority. We, those were non-taxable bonds. We now have an opportunity even with, by converting them to taxable bonds of actually getting an even better tax rate, which, which is surprising. But we can refinance those now at a much lower rate and as a result, save approximately $75,000 to $80,000 per year for the remainder of the, of the period of the bond. And, 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 you know, through the, the refinancing. So we've been working with our investment advisor and we would like your approval to move ahead. We do have the approval of the Colorado Water and Power Authority to refinance those, to refund the loan and, and refinance the bond. And so this is the first reading. We will have the second reading with some of the detailed numbers. Because as we get closer to the date of selling those bonds, we get better focus on what the interest rate is and what the savings is. At this time, we're estimating that we'll save approximately 10% of the net present value of the $7,795,000 remaining balance in, in the bonds. And, you know, we, we don't even think about it until we can demonstrate at least 3% of net present value savings. So this would be a, a really good savings for the water department. So we would ask that you approve this ordinance.
Okay, any questions on this item from council or public? No, I have a hand up. It's Ms. Kircher. I don't know if. Ms. Kircher, do you have a question on this?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my hand down, but it keeps going up. So just please ignore me for the rest of the evening.
Okay, so you don't have a question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I saw it up, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
It's kind of like that Ricky Bobby, I don't know what to do with my hands. All right. Okay, if no further discussion on this, we can make a motion or, or not. Mr. Geek?
I make motion to approve ordinance seventeen forty-nine on the first reading.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, that is it for our business tonight. We are on comments, correspondence, and ex officio reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Trainer, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple items and already hit on the trunk or treat. So I'm not going to hit on that one again. But first comment is, it's great to be back in person and to see you folks again. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, there are some neat advantages of some of the, the technology that we've been able to use to help sort of expand the reach of the council meetings. But it's definitely nice to be back in person. The only one thing I wanted to mention is that, excuse me, that we'll be wrapping up within the next week, all of our CARES Act dollar allocations. And so we'll be, as we wrap those up, a week from tomorrow, we'll, we'll be putting together a report on every dollar that was spent and how it was spent, et cetera. Either how it was spent or how it's planned to be spent. Because we either have to have it spent by the end of September or a plan of how it will be spent by the end of December. Otherwise, those funds go back to the county. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that.
Okay, and, and further on that, the county had to spend the funds in a certain way as well. And for the public, because I had some questions and, and people kind of thought we could just, those are just up in the air funds we could use anywhere. And they were specifically for pandemic issues and because of our emergency declaration and, and things like that. So we couldn't, you know, put them towards streets. We couldn't put them towards parks or anything like that. They had to be specifically for expenses because of the pandemic. And if we didn't spend it, it had to go back. And so we really tried hard to ensure that while we got the things taken care of with the city, we could help small businesses out and those types of things. And, you know, as, as we know, and part of that park nomination tonight, the small businesses are, you know, they're, they're backbone to our community. And so we want to make sure we can help them out because they're the ones who feel that hit the first. And so thanks for all that hard work, especially to Lexi, who really met with those people and, and really was out there campaigning, getting them to, to apply and just even see what we can give them. And so thank you to all that hard work on that.
Yeah, in fact, our last Business Impact Assistant Grant Meeting will be this Friday to do the final business grant. So I think we're going to be up a little over a half a million dollars spent for.
Awesome. Great, okay.
I had a couple people that have applied for grants. Tell me that thank you for how easy ours was. They thought it was the easiest one out there, especially compared to the counties. Make it simple, make the reporting simple, and they really, really appreciated that.
We, we really worked hard, actually worked with the county to try to make sure that ours was extremely simple. And so, thank you. That's wonderful. That's great to hear that.
Todd, anything?
Yeah, two things, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure you knew. We've already heard back from LaShia and she's going to get her code enforcement folks out looking for any illegal signage that's in any right of way, regardless of what it is. So they're going to start that tomorrow again, just to make sure. Also, just to add on, when you, I've explained to a couple of folks about, you'd mentioned the timing of old OPR, Old Pueblo Road and those type of things. When I've explained to them, I've said one thing, we're making good progress on both the financing side because of making development pay its way down there, as well as progress with the railroad. So this is kind of phase one, or this is the first step into getting that Indiana crossing finally completed and a lighted intersection on 8587. And before we'll ever see any of that daily pain that we see at Ohio and Maine, we got to get that traffic light in place. So when I've explained that to them and I said, guys, we're trying to get this done this year. So hopefully, timing-wise of the railroads, we can start on that Indiana project next spring because that's going to be a pretty extensive project. It shouldn't affect it like this, other than we're working on intersections at 85 and then intersections at Old Pueblo. And when I explain the big picture to them and say, we've got to go through this short-term pain to be able to get to that long-term where we get this issue that we have at this intersection multiple times a day, they kind of start understanding a little bit. So if you get a chance and you're talking to folks, just explain that big picture with them. This is really the first step and getting it done this fall is really going to open up the opportunity to start getting Indiana next year.
And the final piece to that are quiet zones. I mean, ultimately, that, that's, that's what we're working towards. And you still hear that one train horn. And, and in order for us to get to that one final piece, this is, this is that, that, that there. And also, I think people need to understand is, a lot of this is being paid by developers.
It is. Right now, Old, Old Pueblo Road, the, the total amount is being paid by developers.
Right, so this isn't on, on taxpayers, this isn't on our general fund. This is things that we've, we've really forced that issue in, in ensuring that you're going to bring the growth, you're going to help, help pave our way for that growth, so.
And the last, the last phase, which we're calling phase four now on the Link Road project, lowering that, that blind hill as it comes up, that's going to cause some additional pain out there, but that's being paid by developers.
Right.
So one thing we're trying to do is as soon as they fund it, we get that construction going.
Right.
Because you don't know how long it's going to be there. You don't know what's going to happen. We render that in the recession day. So as soon as it's in there, we try to time it so we get it going and get it completed.
Right, and so they don't take the money back.
Thank you.
Or the prices go up and then we end up having to pay for it anyway, so.
Right, that's, because right now, we're again, we're seeing 10 to 20% increases in that type of construction yearly. So if we wait till next construction season, it's more expensive for everyone.
Right.
Yeah, and big picture, if we're able to get Indiana done for what we hope to, we hope then to move to the last couple of the moving found forward projects. And we have some, some options to include something possibly down in the south more along 8587. So we're really trying to take advantage of everything and we're hoping to see some things fall in place where we'll be able to help more folks in more portions of the city and not just down here in the, in the old town area.
Okay, all right, thanks, Todd. Okay, all right, thanks, Todd. All right, Troy, anything tonight? I unmuted you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. The only thing I wanted to mention is just to reiterate, Mr. Mayor, what you mentioned, you know, I'm always available to discuss. You know, I'm kind of a nerd for democracy, like I've told everybody. And so if anyone wants to talk First Amendment, I'm happy to do it. But just to reiterate that, that I'm pretty confident in the city council's decision that it does not violate the First Amendment and, and that we're, we're making constitutional decisions. So if anyone wants to talk about it further, I'm always happy to do that. So, but that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Troy. All right, Mr. Lewis, anything further?
Thank you, Mayor. Just that in the next day or so, I'll be contacting you so that we could try and set up the, that public budget meeting for the 2021 and 2022 budget, the two year budget, sometime in the next three weeks to four weeks. And then we'll have, we can have a public meeting and, and go through that. Meanwhile, the staff has been working really hard at putting everything together.
Yeah, it's such a, a treat when we get to talk budget.
I knew you'd be excited.
Yeah. And it's the big one this year because we're, we're doing our next two years and so.
It'll be a two year budget, right?
Yeah, and I think our last me, our discussion we had a year ago, it went really well. So I'm looking forward to that. Okay, not really, but okay. Miss, is Kimberly gone? Okay, she's gone. Okay, Mr. Trowich?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just a couple of things for this evening, you know, as we wind down the month of September, it looks like we're going to have a whole lot of activity going on, on in October and into November. And so I would encourage the council and anyone who's listening in the public to check back with our website and social media pages and the local newspaper and other resources frequently here. A couple of things, you know, we recently updated the Streets webpage and are providing updated information about all those transportation and road projects that are going on in the city that Todd just talked about. We have the ongoing placemaking survey there out in front of City Hall. And so you can go to the website and get more information about that. There'll be a lot more coming out about the trunk or treat event in October. We look forward to promoting the Military Appreciation Banner Program as well as we look to November and Veterans Day. And then in mid-October, we also are looking forward to and putting together a campaign about the Fountain Utilities Water Quality. So a whole lot of information, a whole lot of activity and some really good stuff. And so we encourage everybody to, to check back frequently on our webpages and social media and in our local papers for more information. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Paul, anything from IT?
Just some apologies for the issues this evening. It would seem that GoToWebinar has had a few gremlins running through their system tonight and it's impacted the meeting in a couple of different ways. So my apologies there. Other than that, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and it's not on you, so we know we're going to be dealing with this and, and it's, it's going to be a work in progress with, with this virtual thing. But, you know, we'll, we'll handle it as it is and, and we'll keep going. So thanks, Paul. Ms. Huffman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing, okay. I'll go through council super quick. Ms. Duncan, anything further?
I'm just, we're going to have our first youth council tomorrow via Zoom. I just have to get with Scott, I believe. I don't know if I need to get with you or not or who I need to get, but he'll tell me where I need to go to get a photo release form for the kids to be on Zoom. And we're going to have an overview of what the program is going to entail for the rest of the year through May. We are still taking interested students who would like to participate. Today is also National Voter Registration Day. I encourage everyone to check their voter registration. The last thing I have is that the Colorado Springs Business Journal has a program. It's called Women of Influence. And I was nominated to be one of those women of influence. And I got a call today and I was chosen to be in that journal. So a pro moment for me. And the, the program is on November the fifth. So I need you guys to put that on your calendar because I want to see your faces there. We'll be at the pinery on November the fifth.
All right, great, awesome. Congrats. Mr. Geek?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes? Mayor Protem?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Thompson? Okay, I do have one thing I need to, I needed, if, if the council can just indulge me for a second. I was, I, along with Ms. Thompson and Scott, were sending an email tonight through Andrew Gunning, who's our PPACG Director. And we're, there's some confusion as to why they're asking him to do, to be the messenger and, and but the PPRTA, they're going to be renewing their authority, I guess, is that the best way to put it? Scott renewing their, and they're asking if the City of Fountain would like to join with them on a next go around. They, we went through this with them a few years ago and there was going to be no benefit really to the City of Fountain at the time. And so we chose to stay out and then we actually went with our own ballot initiative, Moving Fountain Forward. We, we did our own transportation tax as well as the, the bus service and things that we've, we've kind of just brought in-house and have been able to handle doing that. So apparently the board is asking if we would like to partner in that or at least join up with them. Personally, I could tell you I would not be in favor of that, mainly because the the monies that they will start taking, it would be a tax increase for us here in the City of Fountain. Those monies would then be put into a larger pot to encompass the entire RTA. However, there, there's no guarantee. And, and if I remember the last time, there were, there was absolutely no guarantee that any of those monies that, that people would be paying into from the City Fountain would, would actually benefit any projects here within the city. My suspicion is, is they've got a list that's very long of projects they want to do and none of them are included in the City Fountain because, one, we're not a part of that. And even if we became a part of it legally, and I'll come back to why I say legally, I don't know that we would be included on, on any round of, of improvements at this point. And, and back to my, my comment a minute ago about legally, they've been taking PPRTA taxes from us as it is since Academy Highlands has, has been instituted. Even though the, the Academy Highlands is within the city and no longer technically a part of the PPRTA. And you will have members from that board say, well, we put all those improvements on, on South Academy for this development and I will wholeheartedly and vehemently disagree with that statement because when they did those improvements to South Academy, Academy Highlands wasn't even a thought yet. It was not a development that was coming. It was not anything that, that, that needed those improvements. Those improvements were done because South Academy was congested. South Academy needed to be fixed so that they could have a better access point for Fort Carson and those sort of things. And so we've been into a few battles with the PRT, if you can't hear that in my conversation now. And they've really treated Fountain as a stepchild. And so, or the lack of a better term, the redheaded stepchild. And so, you know, personally, I don't see that the value in us joining with them. We have our own tax that, that, that we, a part of it did sunset and we did try with like the help of Mr. Couch and that, and that group with the Moving Fountain Forward Group. Obviously, that part of it didn't continue, but we still have some of that tax that is going today and, and funding our, our own road issues. And it's all 100% being spent within the city limits of Fountain. So I can tell you right now, and I think you probably know where I would lean on that, but I did commit that I would check with you guys if, if you feel strongly that, yes, we need to be a part of that. Yes, we need to tax our, our citizens here in the City of Fountain to benefit the county and Colorado Springs and then I'm, I'm willing to listen to it. But if, if any of you feel very strongly about that, please let me know if anybody in the public feels like we need to be a part of it. I can tell you that we're just, I really do not believe we're going to see a benefit. And so we're going to be paying a lot of taxes into that with really no benefit in return. I mean, we're already seeing it now because they're taking a lot of taxes at the Academy Highlands. And when I say Academy Highlands, for those who don't know what that is, it's our, our new Walmart and Sam's Club and everything that's up there. So, and they're, they're taxing us without representation as well because we have no representation on that board. We'll say you have a commissioner, but that's really, he, he's, he's, he's a commissioner for the county, not for the city specifically. And so he has a greater responsibility to those outside of the City of Fountain that he needs to be responsible for. So that's not true representation. And so while we've gone to legal battles and, and so far we've not been able to do that, I think the wrong message is out there. So that's my soapbox. If, again, if you feel very strongly that we need to be a part of that, please speak up or forever hold your peace. I'm going to send a letter back respectfully declining the opportunity. And, you know, I, I will throw out a couple of concessions that if you can guarantee that we would have some projects right away as well as two voting members on their board, specifically from the City Fountain, maybe we would consider it. But at that point, I just don't, I don't, personally, I don't see the point. So, and it would be double taxing our citizens anyway because we're already being taxed, so.
How many ways would you like me to say I do not think it's in the best interest of our citizens? I'm very disappointed. I have worked very hard for the past few years to stress the separation of PPRTA and PPACG as entity. PPRTA basically exists in that facility as its own separate entity, its own separate bylaws, its own separate board of directors. And the, the executive director of PPACG is not the executive director of PPRTA. I think that, and, and so I'm very disappointed that that letter came that way. The issue, another issue besides the fact that I don't, we were to get 40 cents per dollar that we put into it that would potentially on be spent in our community. And there was no guarantee, as you referred to, that that would happen, was that we were also forced to be part of the Mountain Metro Bus Service. The Mountain Metro Bus Service does not answer to anyone on the Colorado Springs City Council under their strong mayor system and only answers to the mayor of Colorado Springs. So we would have no representation, right? We have a fantastic bus service that was put together. We have the flexibility to offer new stops when, or changes when things occur and really help our citizens get around the town. They have about a 30 minutes around town now, all the way around the route, completely around the city. Mountain Metro, sometimes when we got buses, it was at least an hour between buses and sometimes longer. And our route was always the first one to be shortened because, of course, we did have a lot of low ridership. Yes, I understand it would be convenient if there was one entire bus system that you could get on and ride it. But I do not believe that you would not have to transfer somewhere in Colorado Springs, as we've already seen. If you want to go up to Garden of the Gods, it's still going to take you several hours to get there and back. And Mountain Metro thinks that's okay. So I think we're, we have a fantastic bus system and I think we need to stick with taking care of our own down here. And I have been to RTA meetings. I watched the way the hands come out of different things that change priorities quickly within their budgeting system when somebody needs a little bit more money here and there. I've seen Commissioner Gonzalez fight road dieting to be used with RTA monies with up in Colorado Springs. So I mean, I, you know, while he is, I've asked him to stay on that board and be our representation. And I think we should research, if any, I thought, under the RTA, that some of that money had to go back and be used in the place, the area it was collected from. So maybe that's something we need to look at, but.
We've explored that already and it is. It's being used within the RTA.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and when people are voting on that RTA next time around, you need to really watch those boundaries. This message is bigger than just the people in the room. Because any city that's going to think about incorporating any land that's in the RTA, you're going to be paying those tax dollars whether that city, that money is going back to your city or not. That's one of the reasons I fought so hard to keep that little piece of land, the commercial property that was out off of Mark Shuffle that's not part of the RTA. So if they develop that commercially, that will be tax dollars that are taxed at our fountain rate and we get to keep the tax dollars and RT doesn't benefit from it. And I know a lot of people are kind of unhappy with me that night, but, but I was trying to see the bigger picture of, you know, not, not giving that up and keeping those tax dollars and not sharing it. So, no, I, I can't say it strongly enough. I think, I think our citizens, if they decide they want to have a tax measure increase for roads, it needs to be 100% of the dollars like we tried to last year that stays in our city. And our citizens get to choose what the dollars are used for.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say it again?
I got it.
You got it.
You got to do serious people if they might appear more taxes.
Yeah.
That's the end of that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, so with that, I'm going to, I'm crafting a, a letter back to Mr. Gunning to respectfully decline again. And I will make sure you guys could at least get a copy of that to see. And if, if you don't want to come out publicly and say why you think we should be a part of it and you want to talk to me privately, please do. That's okay, but we'll, we'll have that discussion then. So I have nothing else. I'm sorry for that, but I do, I wanted to make sure I got that in because I am going to send something back rather expeditiously. With that, our next council meeting is October 13th. We have no executive session meeting tonight and we are adjourned. Thank you.